Hey, everybody. Welcome back to another episode of Just Listen To Yourself with Kira Davis. This is a podcast where we take hot topics, hot button issues, and we discuss the talking points on those issues. And we draw those talking points all the way out to their logical conclusion. Today, we're going to do a little bit of citizen journalism. So as you guys know, you came with me on the journey. In 2022, I ran for school board here. I did not win, but I had the pleasure of meeting other pro parent candidates while I was campaigning. We kind of ran as a block. We supported each other, offered each other advice, all that kind of stuff. And I was really proud when my friend Madison Minor won as a parent empowerment candidate in Orange Unified School District. For those of you outside of California, Orange Unified School District is the next district over from mine. It's here in Orange County, in the city of Orange, in case you are confused. They had a vicious battle for those seats. They flipped the board. They did it. It was a great campaign. And then the unions started a recall. And unfortunately, the recall was successful. They recalled their two conservative pro parent candidates, making the board majority liberal, majority pro-union. We were disappointed. It seems to be the playbook for California school boards for the unions moving forward. And I think Republicans in California, and particularly across the United States, need to be paying attention to this. This is a strategy. It's coming to you. They're testing it out here. So Madison called me and she said, well, I have a little bit of info about what might have been going on inside the school district during that time. And I think this is a story that is going to catch a lot of eyes once we expose it to the sunlight. So even if you're not from South Orange County or California, this is going to be a story you're going to want to hear because you're going to get tips on how to poke into what's going on on your board. This is really important. And I think ultimately, the important lesson here is that you have to keep an eye on these people. These people depend on being invisible. So we're going to make sure going on in Orange Unified School District is not invisible anymore. Please welcome to the show, former OUSD school board member, the minor. Welcome to the show, Madison.
Thank you, Kira. Thank you so much for having me.
I'm so glad you've actually been on this show before. I think you were on when you were running. We, we had you on and I, before we get started, I want to say that I was just so proud of you for the race that you ran. And you never bent, you never wavered, and you were in a bipartisan district. I was in a very conservative district. Your area was very bipartisan. How many doors did you personally knock on in 2022?
Oh, my goodness. Okay, so me personally, I think I lost count, but I had a small army of parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles that came with me. And we knocked close to 75,000 doors. Wow. What was that? July, August, September, October, November? So yeah, about four months.
Thousand doors. You, I mean, that was the definition of a ground campaign and you won. You, you got it. And that was rough. I mean, me and you were talking through the whole thing. Not only were we dealing with unions, but then also our husbands who were like, I cannot handle one more yard sign in this.
Yeah. I'd have to hide them like I was a, you know, a yard sign addict, like hide them behind the couch so I didn't see him.
I still have signs rolling around this house. It's terrible.
I do too. I know. He just told me, he's like, can we throw those away? I don't know. There were so much money.
This is what I'm saying. It was so much like those signs represent so much sweat, blood and tears. I just can't throw it away. But let's talk before we get started. And this is actually a big story. I think it's huge. But before we get in there, I just want to lay a little groundwork for what happened to you when you arrived at the board? We, we have, we call them Board of Trustees here in California. You may where, where you are, but it's your school board. So when you arrived in the school board, it was already a contentious situation. Now, I said you flipped the board, but did you flip it or you just got your two, you did flip it? Right. Okay. I wanted to make sure about that. So you arrived.
We kept an incumbent. We kept an incumbent. So we had three or two, what was that? We had one incumbent that was running and there were three of us that would have been new trustees. And I was the only one out of the three new trustees to win, but that, that ultimately ended up flipping the board from a three, four left majority to a four, three conservative majority.
And why did you run in the first place? What made you, because you're, you're, not to say you're just a mom, but like, like we were just moms. We both have kids in school. What, why did you run?
Gosh, you know, back in 2016, a friend from church said, you should probably start going to board meetings and know what they're teaching your kids in the future. Cause my oldest at the time was, he would have been two years old. And then I had a newborn and then I was surprised pregnant with a third. And so I, I looked at her. I said, look at me. I'm, I'm exhausted. I have a newborn. I'm pregnant. I have a toddler. I'm not going to a board meeting. And she just kept telling me, you should probably go. So I went. I couldn't believe it. I started going to board meetings regularly, starting in 2016. Finally, in 2020, my oldest was in kindergarten and I was just so angry at the policies that they were passing. And they weren't following the science. And so I went to board meetings just to honestly, just to pray over the meetings and to be a number. And it ended up that, you know, they'd have me pray for the entire group of conservatives that showed up. And then it was, hey, maybe, maybe you should start talking at these board meetings. And I said, no, I'm not, not into the public, you know, realm. I don't need to be a face out there in the frontline. And, but I started getting frustrated because I would watch, I would sit in these board meetings. Actually, I would sit outside because they locked us outside in the cold. So I'd have my sleeping bag tucked over me and my other, you know, parkas. I have two parkas on my shoulders with a, like the little heat pads in my pockets. And I'd sit out there and I'd listen to these meetings and we wouldn't even able to watch. There wasn't even a TV, but we, we would listen to these meetings from outside. And then when you had your speaking opportunity, you'd get to go inside and stand or sit, you know, six feet away from other people, which makes so much sense. It's laughable now that I look back. But I would watch as these other people were begging and speaking and talking to these trustees. And I would watch, especially the incumbent that I ended up beating. I'd see her and she would just be looking down or laughing at them or talking to the board member next to her. Or it's just so disrespectful. And I think she just made me mad enough that I wanted to take her down. And so I ran, I ran because I, I felt like I wanted to be a voice for parents and for moms and for people that are more on the conservative side that don't want, you know, pornography and the sexualization, sexualization of children to happen. I, I campaigned on those, on those platforms and I campaigned to change out the guard of leadership in OUSD. Cause in Orange Unified, we had a superintendent who was not listening to the parents and beat a 21 year incumbent purely by grit and hard work with, like I said, an army of parents and a whole lot of Jesus, because I truly don't think beating a 21 year incumbent is something that you would typically do, especially as a mom of four kids. But I was just, I was determined to give it my all. And so were the parents and the grandparents and aunts and uncles that believed that I would do the good job, the best job that I possibly could do if I was elected.
So you get there, you get sworn in and you guys get down to work. Was, were there controversial things on the docket that you guys started working on right away? That sort of raised the ire of the unions? Or was it sort of from the get-go, they were determined to pull you out of there?
I heard and got emails, very nasty emails from constituents that were leftists. The day I got voted in, December 13th, I was already receiving emails. I was already getting that. I got anonymous letters in the mail from people saying they're going to find me and just these nasty psychobats.
Pause right there for our listeners. Yeah, she did say December 13th. That's how long it takes us to certify elections here in California. So you really are waiting until almost Christmas to find out if you won.
Like a week before Christmas, I found out that I won.
Yeah. I found out that I lost. Yeah.
Right. And it's, it's so crazy too, Kira, because the, the incumbent who I beat out, she still went to the CSBA, you know, school board conference, which was on the dime of OUSD families, the tax dollars, you know, hundreds of dollars that they paid to send her. Maybe even thousands. Honestly, I don't even know how much it costs because I, I never even got to go. And so that, that was December 13th. Obviously, the election was over first week of November. But in California, where we have all the nefarious happenings in our elections, fraud, for example, we didn't find out till December 13th. That's when I was voted in. The day prior, the Orange County Supervisor's Office, is it validated, certified, certified the election? And that's when I found out that I had officially had won. And so I showed up the next day at the board meeting and they called me up and swore me in. And yeah, like I said, they were already threatening recall the day I was elected and.
Unbelievable.
Yeah. And then the, within the first month, we did do a changing of the guards. The other three that were conservatives incumbents chose to bring that to a board meeting. And I had campaigned on those, on that platform. I campaigned saying I was going to make a change and that included leadership. And so I was all for it. I think that our former superintendent and assistant superintendent were not great leaders. They were not doing a good job for our children. They were not protecting kids. They were not actually educating our kids. Our test scores are abysmal. They still are. And so I felt like they needed to go. And so that was the first thing that I did was I, I voted in favor of firing our superintendent and our assistant superintendent. They were placed on administrative leave, but they were soon thereafter fired. And then it kind of just, I continued on the rampage from there.
When did you find out that, did you find out like right away that the unions were attempting or organizing a recall? Or was it sometime later?
No, yeah. I mean, I just assumed, I guess, because, you know, they would, they would come to every board meeting and cuss at me and call me all the nasty names.
They're vicious.
Follow me to the bathroom and say nasty things as I walk to the bathroom during board meetings. Grocery stores with my four kids, they would come up to me and, you know, yell at me, point at me, call me a liar in front of my children and all this garbage. It was, it was pathetic. I mean, they're.
I want to stop, I'm going to stop you right there. This is another reason why this story is important. Because when you, dear listener, decide to go run for your school board or wherever local office you want, it's not as easy as you make it, I say easy, but knocking on doors. There you are, you have to understand you're running for an office that's in your community. You're not going to Sacramento. You're not going to DC. You have to live and work with these people who you're campaigning against and we're dealing with an enemy, for lack of a better term, that has no moral compass and really does not care. And they operate, they truly do. This is not hyperbole. They truly do operate on fear. Their whole goal is to instill fear. This is why I asked Madison, does she, did she know right away that the unions were going to recall her? You'll, you notice what she said. I kind of assumed it. Nobody's getting that right now. If you're running for school board in California and you win, you better assume you're getting a recall. If you run, run knowing you will get a recall. We're dealing with this here in my own school district. Now that we flipped our board, we have school board members who are feeling a little bit scared now to do anything because we're going to get a recall. Recall's coming. So it doesn't matter. It's coming. So part of this story that I want to, to, I want people to be inspired to dig into what's going on in their own area. And when these things come up, start forming a strategy and start getting busy. Because these people have worked unopposed till now, but this ends here. So.
Yeah.
So you're there. You know, these recalls are coming. You know that you are, you have a lot of unhappy progressives who have put a target on you and your, your colleague.
Right.
What was going on? What big things were you working on inside the district while you were there?
So we immediately passed a parent bill of rights change where we added to the bill of rights. You know, that secondary material that your teacher maybe gives to your student at school, but they don't send home because it's just busy work. That's called secondary or supplemental instruction. So we passed in our bill of rights, a mandate that a parent can come into the office and ask for any and all supplemental instruction to the principal of their student's teacher, which was hilarious because that seems so benign. But the now teachers' union president, her name's Karen, she immediately came to the news and said, I will never give up that information. It's, it's ridiculous to even ask that, you know, I, I do this, that and the other. And it's like, well, if you have nothing to hide, then what's the problem with bringing that to the parents, the kids' parents? To me, that seems like such a silly thing to have a mountain on, you know, have your hill that you die on. But anyway, so that was, that was the first thing. Then shortly after, we passed a flag policy where we wanted only the American flag to be flown at our campuses. I wanted it to be a little bit more rich in there, in the content, but we, we weren't able to do the entirety of the, of the, of the policy. But so that passed. And then the last and most controversial policy that passed was a parent notification policy. And that notification policy is something that I helped author with Nicole Pearson and Jen Kennedy and Erin Friday. And it was, it was amazing. And it was all to protect kids and to protect and promote parent rights. And the idea behind that is that if your child wants to change bathrooms, their name, their gender, then they are to the school through the counselor is to notify the parents. And the parents would, would come into the office, have a conversation. They would get tools. They would learn, you know, about counseling opportunities that their child can have. They would learn how they can support that child, how they can make sure that their child feels safe and comfortable and able to speak with their parents. Because the truth is, is there's, you know, there's a lot of kids that might mock, harm, terrify a kid who's confused about their gender. And so for a parent to be involved in that conversation, especially once that, that bell blows or the bell goes off, you know, the, the teacher's not going home with that kid. And so if the teacher is the only one that knows and that kid goes home and heaven forbid, they commit suicide or harm themselves in any way, you know, that's, that's on the teacher. That, that, that shouldn't be on the teacher. They're not a counselor. They're not a psychologist. They're not a, a medical professional. And so that, that right goes to the parents that they should know and be able to protect their child. So that was the last policy that I passed. And then I was working really hard on fixing a broken curriculum that's, you know, using our state standards. We had in OUSD and Orange Unified, we had under 50% of our kids were performing well on tests, the state testing, which is required for most of our students. I know some kids can opt out, but that's how you get your funding for your school is through those state testings. And we had below 50 percentile for math. We had right at 50th percentile for reading and literacy for English. And that's failing. Those are failing scores. And there was something that needed to change in what we were doing in Orange Unified. And I'm sure in your district as well, Kira, is not working. And instead of, you know, open arms saying, yeah, let's get this fixed. I had a lot of heels digging into the ground and a lot of administrators in OUSD that were not wanting to get uncomfortable and not wanting to do big changes. Because quite frankly, it's easier to teach crap curriculum.
That's the setup. Here's the story.
Sorry if I talk too much.
Because people need to know, people need to know what the background of this is. This is very important. Because what you're hearing is Madison telling you she had a plan. She went in there, she executed the plan. And then the unions proceeded to execute a strategy to burn, boot her out. And you hear all of the very common sense things that she was doing, nothing crazy. It should, it is, it is astonishing that anyone would suggest that a parent shouldn't be able to, at any time, walk into the school and see what materials are being taught in the classroom. It's just astonishing. And I will add this. I have in, right now, in my possession, stories that are being worked on of parents who had that situation where their kid was transitioned at school. They didn't know, kid goes home, parent has no tools to deal, they don't even know what's going on with the kid. Subsequently, kid makes a suicide, suicide attempt or runs away. I'm working on a couple of those stories. So this is not rare. It does happen. But there was something else that was going on at the time as well. And that's still really an unfolding story. And, and that is this idea that even though we went through COVID and teachers weren't at school and they weren't checking in and they were doing Zoom school across California, they were all still asking for raises. And your local or your union was negotiating a raise with your board. And so there are some very questionable things that are happening, still going on surrounding that. Were you on the board while you were negotiating this raise with the teachers' union?
Yes.
So you were part of these negotiations and then, oh my goodness, look what happens. We got a recall on Madison Minor. But here's the thing, people.
The curious thing is every time we went to sign on the dotted line, they would say, oh, you know, we need to fix this wording. And so it was just constant delay tactics. And I heard from teachers that were, you know, in favor of me being on the board, who said, we were told by the teachers' union that you, the school board, are delaying us getting our teachers raises. And it's really souring a lot of the moderate teachers in our school district because they're being told by the teachers' union that you guys are the reason that we haven't gotten our raise. And so she, you know, a couple of these teachers reached out to me and said, is that actually the truth? Cause they're starting to believe it. You know, you hear it enough, you start believing it. But that was absolutely incorrect. We were, we were totally ready to make a very generous teacher's raise.
And who was the president of the teachers' union that you were dealing with?
His name is Greg Goodlander. He was the president at the time while I was on the school board.
So Greg Goodlander is the president of the teachers' union. And ostensibly, this messaging is coming from him, right? I mean, obviously.
Correct.
Top down, right? That's going through the school board timing.
They have a negotiation team. You know, I think it's three or four school board, I mean, teachers' union members who are part of this team that does the negotiations. But ultimately, yes, he is the president. He's in charge of making the final decisions and I'm sure bringing it to a vote.
And who was the president of your school board at the time?
At the time, it was a conservative Rick Ledesma who was recalled with me.
Okay. You got that, everybody? Rick Ledesma, president of the school board, recalled. Madison Minor, parent empowerment candidate, recalled. Greg Goodlander, president of the teachers' union, working to negotiate teacher salaries. It's not until after Madison left that something very disturbing came up that I think had a lot to do with the recalls and might signal some illegal activities here. So I'm not going to ask Madison to take it away here and tell me what she's found out. And I want, before you go, Madison, I want everyone to know, we're just asking questions here. We're not saying anything. There's nothing coming out that we don't have documentation of. We're not casting aspersions. We're not spreading lies. We are only asking questions. And we are asking questions about things that are, that regard the public good.
Right.
Please continue.
So I'm going to do it kind of in timeline form because I think that kind of helps my brain.
Perfect.
To compartmentalize it.
I think that's great for the internet too. The internet likes timelines. So go ahead.
Okay, perfect. I'll make one later. I'll draw it up on paper. Cartoon it. Okay. So I was recalled March of 2024, which seems like it was so much longer ago than it was. I was recall, I was elected, you know, December of 2022. Calls began December of 2022. The recall talk officially started happening in 2023 where it got onto the ballot. And the ballot would have been for the primary in March. And so March, I get recalled, I hear the news and quickly thereafter, the new majority, which was a three, two, because it was a three, it was a four, three conservative majority. Two of us were recalled. So now there's only five left. So three of them are raging leftists and two of them are conservatives. So the three of them obviously can appoint whomever they want to, take the seats of Rick Ledesma and myself. So they bring on these two crazy people to replace our seats. And immediately thereafter, they sign, it was June 13th of 2024. They signed a teacher's raise of 9.75%, which was the highest in Orange Unified School District history for our teachers, and it was retroactive as well. So it also.
Stop. Recap. Madison and Rick get booted. They appoint, do you hear this? They appoint the school board members to replace them. So it's not a vote of the people. This is sort of a like Kamala, Joe Biden situation where they just thrust somebody out there. And then, oh my gosh, teacher's raise gets approved. Continue.
Yeah. So the teacher's raise gets approved, but it also got approved retroactive. So they retroactively placed it into July 2nd, or July 1st of 2023. So a year prior, these teachers are now getting a 9.7%, 9.75% raise. Now let me, let me pause real quick and say, we have amazing teachers in Orange Unified. Absolutely. We have great teachers. We also have some really crappy ones. So for the entirety of this district to now get a 9.75% raise was very shocking to me, not only because we had some, you know, conversations in closed session that had to do with the max that we were able to give for a raise without putting our school district in a compromised position. You know, you do the math on an Excel spreadsheet, you plug in that percentage. And when it comes up to where it's red, where, you know, you're giving them too much of a raise to where now your district literally doesn't have the funding to pay for that raise. You know, you as a school board trustee, that's your job is to say yes or say no to that. And we, as the conservative majority, were looking at the potential of a raise that high. And we quickly were told by leadership, by the district staff, by lawyers, that that was not smart, that that would have bankrupted the district. So that was, that was July 1st, sorry, that was June of 2024. June 13th, that that happened, right? Where they got their 9.75% raise. Me as a school board trustee, I'm immediately going, well, former trustee, sorry. I'm immediately going, that doesn't add up. That's going to bankrupt the district because I know how much we have in reserves. I know how much we make each year from the, from the state and federal funding. And I know that I was told by district employees that we cannot fiscally have stability in our school district if we are paying that much to our teachers. And so I sent in PRA after PRA after PRA. I finally got back, you know, the, the contract between the teachers and the, the school, school district. And sure enough, it was 9.75%. And then I kid you not, you know, the summer goes by. And on September 3rd of 2024, the district superintendent of schools sends out a memo that says, and let me get to it real quick, sorry. While the district has a healthy reserve, excuse me, through the closing of the books of 2324 and preparing the unaudited actuals, I have been meeting with our fiscal team as well as staff and the Orange County Department of Education. Based on what I have learned, this is the superintendent of Orange Unified. It appears that the adopted budget in June, that's when the teacher's raise happened, did not fully account for the ongoing costs of the raises. While the district has a healthy reserve and is projected $30 million reserve, by the way, and is projected to meet its fiscal obligations for the current year, for 2024 and the next two subsequent years, updating the budget projections to reflect the cost of the raises appears to require that the reserves will need to be used to meet our obligations. In other words, it appears that we are now at deficit spending, spending more money than we are receiving.
Wait, did I?
This is a memo from the superintendent.
Did, did I, I just want to hear, I want to clarify that I heard this correctly. They sent a letter saying the, the budget is balanced, but it's actually not balanced. That's what the letter says. The budget's balanced, but oh, by the way, the budget is not balanced. Did I hear that wrong or am I getting it?
Yeah, it goes on, if you don't mind.
Please do.
So he talked about deficit spending and the reserve, right? Being used for this, for the teacher salary raises, $30 million. While deficit spending is very concerning as reserves are one-time funds and should never be used for ongoing expenditures such as raises, our substantial reserves allow time to correct the situation, probably firing staff and bring our current spending back in line with current revenues. We are working to finalize the numbers and we will have an accurate picture as the first interim report presentation in December. So you go to. So you go to the presentation report in December by the new superintendent, because, oh yeah, they fired the superintendent that we put in. That was hidden in there, but that's why they started the recall on me was because I fired their superintendent.
Unbelievable.
Just a bunch of hypocrites. So the superintendent of schools, Mike Christensen, gets on the school board meeting. And his recommendation is to look at current staff and consolidate current staff, like get rid of them, fire them. Right? Offer early retirement, which is expensive to a bunch of their current staff. But he also said that he's going to be consolidating schools. So he's gonna be closing down schools that are, and he listed at least six schools that are at 50% or less population than they were 10 years ago in 2014. And there are at least six schools that are, I believe it was six, five or six schools that are below 50% capacity from 10 years ago. So that's awesome. Super child focused, right? Like, let's give these ratings to these teachers.
And then close schools.
Yeah, then we're gonna close schools and we're gonna probably take away specials like art and music and
Yes.
All the, all the extracurricular, you know, stuff that families really want for their kids. So that was September. Then it was December that Mike Christensen, the superintendent, announced probably firing teachers and consolidating schools. And then just for fun, because I guess I should have been a detective in my previous career. But no, I'm just a mom that happens to have some skills. I went on to the Orange County divorce. I guess that was too fast forwarded. I apologize. So I catch wind in January because of a memo that went out by the Orange Unified Educators Association. On January 1st, 2025, so that's this year. Uh, this would have been a couple of weeks after Mike Christensen made that speech about closing schools and consolidating schools and getting rid of teachers. On January 1st, it is announced that Greg Goodlander, the teachers' union president, as, uh, let's see what the exact words are. Effective Monday, December 30th, Greg Goodlander made the decision to step down as president of Orange Unified Educators Association to focus on his family. As vice president, Karen, remember the lady I was talking about, the teacher that said she would never reveal to her parents that secondary supplemental instruction, because it's just too much work to give it to those parents. What a hero. So it is revealed that he is stepping down as of December 30th, 2024. I heard through teachers and through other individuals that are close with the Orange Unified Educators Association, that he was having a, an adulterous affair. And so having seen this memo come out, it obviously, to me, was kind of concluding, okay, yes, he probably was having an affair. But if I'm going to sit here and, and suppose and guess, that's, you know, shame on me for being a gossiper like everyone else. And so I decided to do some research. So rewind, I was able to go on to the Orange County Courts website. Like I said, I'm a detective now, Kira. And I discovered that he petitioned on December 18th, right before Christmas. That's super cool. 24, dissolution of his marriage to his wife. I did hear he has two children, he has a wife, and he is walking away from them because of this supposed affair. Likely, right?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you right here.
The solid proof, you're right.
Okay. No, but no, that's fine. I want, I just wanna stop you right here because I imagine at this point, outsiders are listening and going, okay, he had an affair. That's, you know, it's not great. But he's got bad moral character, but you know, that's his own choice. What does it have to do with this? But as Madison said, well, she's picked up a few extra skills as being just a mom in government. And um, she, her spidey senses were tingling. You didn't leave it there. So stay with us. We're not leaving it here. We're not just being gossips. We're not leaving it here.
No.
Go ahead.
We have more, more information. So.
Go ahead.
Alright, so I hear in January about his stepping down. I do my research. I discover he had filed for divorce December 18th, right before Christmas, like a serious winner that he is. Who does that to their children right before Christmas. And then, um, and then I started hearing rumors from teachers, from principals, from district employees, from people close to the school board, that he had an affair with, I kid you not, teach, or the school board president who approved the 9.75% raise to the teachers' union back in June of 2024. So for an entire year, or I guess it would have been March. So in March, she is appointed as the president of the school board. Uh, her name is Anna Page. She's appointed president. She steps in as president. And then in June, which would have been what, three months later, two and a half months later, she and the rest of the school board. But she's sitting in on some meetings, right? Probably with the superintendent and the negotiating team of the Orange Unified Educators Association.
And you're gone by now, right?
I'm gone. I'm gone by three months now. They approve this teacher's raise. Fast forward to December, Greg Goodlander files for divorce. Fast forward two weeks, it's announced that he has stepped down as teachers' union president. Meanwhile, I'm hearing these rumors and going, okay, I'm not even a part of the school board anymore. Like, let's move on. But then when it becomes the teachers' union president with the school board president, that is incredibly bad because that is our tax dollars getting spent on teachers' raises. And they were likely having sex, having an adulterous affair, having conversations, allegedly, having conversations, allegedly, um, between the sheets while they were both acting independently, uh, approving a 9.75% raise. So, uh, so again, this is all, oh, maybe this happened, maybe it doesn't happen, right? Well, just last week, I got sent a a post that Anna Page, who was the school board president, now she is still a trustee. I got a post from a concerned citizen that says, it's her posting, Anna Page posting on her private social media page. I understand there has been some speculation regarding my relationship status. And I want to address it directly as I deeply value honesty and respect in all aspects of my life.
Right.
I have, I have started a profound relationship with Greg Goodlander. And I want to assure everyone that there is no conflict of interest or political involvement. What truly matters to us is our family, friends, and the values we both hold dear. The kids and I are happy, she has two children of her own, with two different daddies, two different baby daddies.
I'm sure they're real happy.
Uh huh. And she says, the kids and I are happy to welcome him into our lives. We kindly ask for privacy, understanding, and respect as we move forward with positivity and gratitude.
Yeah.
For your support. So I guess my question to her is when did this adulterous affair become a profound relationship? Because I've, I've dated, you know, a couple different guys, men in my life. And I would say profound is probably, I don't know, eight months, nine months, maybe a year. Like, I wouldn't call one month a profound relationship, but this is just speculation, allegedly, right?
Sure, allegedly.
And I do appreciate her value of honesty and respect, but when did the affair start? Was he still married? Oh, yes, he was, because he filed for divorce just recently and he has two children of his own. Did this happen before or after the 9.75% raise that OUSD teachers reached or, or were given? And was there any conversation that happened while they were having this affair, um, in the sheets? And, uh, was there a conflict of interest in tri- Was this, was this part of the detriment to the district?
Also, we have.
Thank you.
We have some visitors in the room. Kids, dogs, this is what it, this is what real life looks like. This is what citizen journalists, journalism looks like. Yeah, no, but that's funny.
Finish my thoughts. So was.
Yeah, please go ahead.
The definition of a conflict of interest, um, is basically this, like, this is a conflict of interest. This is the financial detriment of our district. Our district has said that they're gonna be bankrupt in two and a half years. Going through our reserves that we conservatives helped build up. And she is saying that there's no conflict of interest. Well, there is when you are putting a district in financial distress and having an affair with a gentleman who, not a gentleman, with a man who was married with two kids and was the teachers' union president at the time that the approval of this 9.75% raise came to fruition. So privacy and understanding, my children have been mocked and ridiculed and put on the pedestal since I was on the school board. We had an assistant superintendent that we put in and his children's medical privacies were exposed to everyone at a school board meeting. I've been approached at grocery stores. I've been approached at random parks. I've been approached by nasty, nasty people who are misinformed or complete crazy people. And so, you know, for her to ask for privacy at this time is, it's pretty laughable. Um.
It's a nice way to put it.
Mm-hmm. But it, it, it doesn't stop there.
What? There's more?
No, there's more. I don't, I don't know even I, if I even shared this with you. Um, so it'll be coming out later. So it's, it's actually not too much information that I can share at this time. But people close to, close to both Anna Page and Greg Goodlander have come forward. And they are ready to expose and tell the truth because they are sick and tired of the, of the manipulation and the lies and the mistruths that are out there. And these people are, are ready and willing to bring it forward. And I, I, that's about all I can share about that. But I, I look forward to those, those interviews because it's gonna expose even more of the truth. And, but I think what we already have, to be completely honest with Anna, quite frankly, stupidly posting a social media post about her profound relationship with a teachers' union president. I think that's kind of the nail in the coffin, if you ask me.
When you showed me that, I was like, oh no, honey, this doesn't make it go away. And now you smelling even worse. So it was definitely a miscalculation on her part. I'm surprising if you're stupid enough to do all of these things while you're serving the people. But it's no, there's no question that they were having an affair. That's confirmed by the divorce records and confirmed by her statement. There's no question that teachers got the raise. That's confirmed by OUSD. There, there's no. There's no question that Greg Goodlander was involved in those negotiations. He's the president of the teachers' union. None of those things are in question. And I think Madison, you brought up an excellent point. I mean, this is, you're really working on being, like, maybe your next life is investigative reporter or something. Because you really are Matlock here. But this is like a courtroom moment.
Just a mom, just a mom, Kira.
Say, well, this woman decided, you know, I think this is very impression of you. This woman decided to describe that relationship as profound. That's how she described it. She posted this in, which she posted the other day, February. So just the other day, she posted it last week.
Social media.
Yeah. On her Facebook page, we have the screenshots of that. She posted it and it's February and she used the term profound. When was the teacher's raise?
June of 2024. So, uh, nine months prior.
Nine months prior. So you have a woman in February describing her relationship with the, which would be a conflict of interest if she was still working on this deal. Describing a relationship with the president of the teachers' union that she's been having as profound. And yet wants us to believe that it's recent. Recent being since Christmas, I guess. She didn't really specify what recent means. I mean, I, I think when I, when I look back, I would tell you, Madison, that you know, my son's last championship baseball game was quite recent. But I'm Gen X. It was actually 10 years ago. You know what I mean? Like, to me, what is recent? But we at least, it does bring up questions, Anna. I am sorry, this does not get you out of anything. You should have been quiet. You should have stayed quiet. Because what this does now is it makes me, my reporter brain go, what is recent?
Right.
And what is profound?
Right.
At the very least, I think, parents and voters in Orange Unified School District deserve to have the actual answer to that question. Was there a conflict of interest here? When did the affair start? And were they having a sexual affair while they were negotiating the details of this contract? I don't think that's a crazy question to ask.
Yeah, well, and I, again, this is all potential or, or guessing or speculation. But I gotta believe there's a reason why she brought this to the forefront of her social media page. Like, what a weird place to post. I don't know who posts your relationship status anymore on social media. Maybe it's just me that that's weird, but she posted it on social media. I gotta believe there's a reason why. And rumor on the street is that she's also pregnant with his baby.
Dun dun dun, cue, like cue the shocked gopher. I didn't know that.
Sorry.
It just never, but you know, of course, of course. And I wish I could say that this is the only dirty thing going on in a school district. But this is par for the course. This is why I tweeted out earlier. You know, I, I tweeted out, I teased the story a little bit on my, um, X account. And I said, you know, but people act all kinds of ways in your local government because they believe they're invisible. I went to Orange, yeah, I went to our Orange County, Madison, I went to our, our Board of Supervisors meeting a few weeks ago. And they have some very liberal members of that board. And the, yeah, Katrina Foley is one of the liberal members and she's a horrible person and she is a horrible legislator. And she's rude. She is extremely rude. And I'm, I, I, I don't know what her views on race are. But she seems to be a little bit ruder to those of us who are minorities who take that mic, I noticed. I'm not sure why, but she's extremely rude. And she made a mom cry when I was there. A mom wanted to know, oh, I found some, this mom breastfeeds late at night. So she just sits up there and reads contracts from the county. And she was like, I saw this contract. It doesn't make any sense. Yada, yada. Katrina scolded her for bringing her baby to a meeting, a board meeting. She said she was an irresponsible mother for bringing her baby to the meeting and then giving an emotional statement.
Wow.
And so she cried. So anyways, my whole point is this, Madison. I'm sitting there watching her do this and I'm thinking, this woman thinks she's invisible. That's what this is. She thinks she's invisible because Orange County press doesn't really exist. There's a register, there's some independent bloggers, but it's really hard to get a message out there. Because we're overwhelmed by San Diego and LA news. So.
Right.
These people were you are, Madison, and I felt this when you were fighting that recall. And I marched, I got out there with you and I marched with you as well. And a lot of people did from my district as well. Because we felt you guys were invisible. And you were. I think you were far too invisible for something so important. We lost that recall that I thought we could have won if we had had the proper support. So I'm kind of done with this. We're just gonna go along to get along here in Orange County. And it's just our county business and no one cares. Guess what? I have a national audience. And California is national news. And what happens here matters to other people. So Anna Page and Greg Goodlander and all of the other ne'er do wells, to use my grandmother's term, they're in OUSD, but not just OUSD, across California. You're no longer invisible. This is a question that should be answered because it has drastic implications, Madison. And I want you to comment on this. It has drastic implications for your district. They're talking about dipping into the $30 million reserve fund. We're not getting those federal COVID funds anymore. Trump's about to cut off all the rest of California's federal education funding. Where in the hell do they think that money is supposed to go? What happens to the reserve funds when they're gone, Madison? How do they get, how do you get them back?
You go bankrupt. You, your school district liter- literally will have to go bankrupt when you run out of money. I don't know how else they can do it without firing a significant amount of staff. It's a very top-heavy district. We have a lot of district office employees that are paid six figures plus. I don't, I don't know. I don't know how else they're gonna be able to recover from this except by closing schools and getting rid of more staff, which doesn't help the kids.
No, of course not. It has nothing to do, it has absolutely nothing to do with the kids. Again, as you pointed out, OUSD has wonderful teachers. I, and CUSD here, I have a few teachers that have just really changed the course of my children's lives. They've been amazing teachers. But I wish they were the majority. Unfortunately, those teachers are the minority.